It's Bridge City of Brookhaven, regular scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM. Call the roll.
Mayor Ernst.
I'm here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Present.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember John Partt, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Lindley Jones, District 1.
Present.
We have our quorum.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And Marie, show that cupe pad.
From Lifeline Animal Project, that's Hop Along, an eight-year-old female Chihuahua. And Lifeline is running a July special where all dogs over 25 pounds, though that would not apply to her, and all cats are 1776, and that includes examinations, vaccinations, spaying, neutering, and microchipping. So you can see Hop Along and More Like Her at www.lifelineanimal.org.
Okay. I'll move into public hearings, item one. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to extend the time from 10 minutes to 15 minutes per side for the public hearing.
And I second.
Motion, moving to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. So, we are here for the Z, actually, RZ 16-06, the Tapacor Wick, now, item number one. We're all here for, we all know what we're talking about. So we're going to open up public hearings. If you would please state the rules, Susan, and...
Well, yes, we have our motion for 15 minutes total time for each side, 15 for the opponent and support, and then 15 for the applicant, and then if they have time, they can rebuttal. And we have to have our presentation from department head.
Yes.
And also, please remember, no clapping, no unnecessary whistling calls or anything. Please be professional during the public comment. Thank you.
Ben.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. The rezoning before you is RZ 1606. The developer is Terwilliger Pappas, a multifamily LLC. The property is located at 1411, 1417, 1423, and 1427 Dresden Drive. The property is 2.03 acres in size. The request is to rezone from ONI and R75 to PC2 for development of a mixed-use building with 121 residential units, 3,600 square feet of live-worked units, and 9,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space. Community Development did make a recommendation of denial. That was also followed up by a recommendation of denial by the Planning Commission. I would like to note, however, that as of last Friday, I believe, the applicant did submit a letter stating that they would like to request withdrawal of this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, time to open up public...
Would...
Do you want the applicant?
Would you do the applicant first?
Yes, I do want to do it.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Laurel David with Galloway Law Group. First, I'd like to introduce Greg Power with Terwilliger Pappas to confirm that we would like to withdraw the application without prejudice.
How you guys doing? My name's Greg Power. I'm with Terwilliger Pappas. Like, I'm here tonight to withdraw our application. We worked really hard on trying to design something that would meet the land use plan and gain support of the neighborhood. We were unsuccessful, and we have no intentions of pursuing this project any further. So, with that, we'd like to withdraw our application. Thank you.
So, I did want to say that tonight, I am actually representing the property owner, John Carlos, to plead for the withdrawal without prejudice. And with that, I'd like to reserve my remaining time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. Proponents?
No, it's proponents first, then opposition.
Start with the opponents.
Yep.
Our first speaker is Bob Sirrentio.
Surtino.
Sirrentio, and he has a presentation. You do? Is it you that have the...
Who's got the presentation?
You're doing it.
What? Oh.
You're doing it.
Ah, okay. Okay. Good evening, and thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. We are going to ask the City Council to deny without deferral or withdrawal the applicant's proposal. There are many reasons that lead to this decision. All of them are based around the understanding of what makes the Dresden corridor so great. Perhaps it's the top-rated restaurants like Haven and Valenza, or taking the kids up for tacos at Verde. Maybe it's being seen on the patio at Kaleidoscope. And it's not just the restaurants. Maybe you're just picking up a gourmet bite at Savvy Market, a beer growler, or a great bottle of wine to share with friends. If it's a Saturday, you might be off to the farmer's market. Dresden's corridor is a... The Dresden corridor is a unique balance of single-family homes, townhomes, and condos, blended with restaurants, small businesses, and boutique shops, all of which are on a human scale and pedestrian-friendly, with lots of permeability, integration into the neighborhood. This is an important point. Dresden works because it strikes a balance of play, work, demographic, and density. Everyone from 20-somethings to young families to older at Lenz, daily drivers, MARTA riders, to retirees. All of us moved to this niche corridor to be close to the city, but not too close. Call it just right. This just-right level is valuable, and just like anything valuable, we are weren't the only ones who noticed. Unfortunately, before the City of Brookhaven was founded, developers saw an opportunity to exploit the value of the corridor. By adjusting unit counts on their spreadsheets to unimaginable levels, we got at 1377 and Rosewood as a result. Today, we are stuck with these towering monolithic walls of brick and balcony. It's no stretch to say that these structures are out of character and out of place in our urban village. They are impermeable, anomalous, and singular in purpose, that being a dense apartment living. Like sore thumbs, they stick out, they challenge that delicate balance that has brought such vibrancy to the corridor. They are here to stay. We have no choice but to bring them into the fold of our community, but we cannot afford to make the same mistake again. We call to be smarter about future development along the corridor, and we hope to rely on our H to the whole, the city that we did not have before, to help us and protect us. Tonight, we need our city to hear what the people of Brookhaven have to say, that this proposal to put very high-density apartments in our corridor should be denied. It is far too dense, far too monolithic in design, and far too singular in purpose. It crosses the limits of what the adjoining residences can tolerate. It disrupts that delicate balance that makes Dresden corridor so special and unique. We can do much better and be much smarter about the development along the corridor, but we need your help. We have collected over 730 signatures and counting in favor of smart development and smart growth along Dresden Drive. 730. To put that in perspective, that's over three times the number of signatures that were collected to support the incorporation of Brookhaven as a city. This is who we are speaking for tonight. We are now going to share specifically what you need to know to help join us in our vigilance to keep Dresden great now, in the coming weeks, the months, and years. Thank you very much, and I sincerely ask you guys to deny without withdrawal or deferral.
All right. May I please, the council? My name is Daniel Shim. My wife and three kids live at 1405 Canucci, directly across the street from my neighbors whose block or whose backyards adjoin the proposed development. Their six criteria applicant had dissatisfied to obtain rezoning, and ironically, that gave the six reasons to deny the rezoning request outright. The first criteria is whether the rezoning proposal is in conformity with the policy and intent of the comprehensive plan. The answer is clearly no, and I think it's a no-brainer that it's a no. The LCI Design Guidelines are the backbone of the comprehensive plan, and while encouraging density around the Brookhaven MARTA station, it clearly reflected an intent to decrease density as development moves away from higher-traffic areas towards established, single-family neighborhoods. What applicant had proposed exceeds even what the LCI contemplated for a major roadway. Dresden Drive is not a major roadway. The LCI Design Guidelines are spelled out in the comprehensive plan in two basic principles. First, to preserve existing residential density of an adjoining neighborhood character area, in our case, the Brookhaven Heights/Brookhaven Fields character area. And then, second, by providing for transition step downs on two planes between the MARTA TOD and adjoining, adjoining, single-family neighborhoods going east along Dresden, and between more intense development within the Brookhaven-Petrie Overlay District in areas adjacent to single-family neighborhoods to the north and south of Dresden. To these two principles, we can add the intent of the comprehensive plan in excluding any parcel along Dresden Drive beyond the MARTA TOD from city-designated priority redevelopment. As you can see from this top-down view, applicant's proposal lacks any step down either east along Dresden to the overlay district's terminus, or south to the single-family homes sitting along Canucci Drive in that red box. Moreover, the rezoning proposal completely compromises the residential density of Brookhaven Fields immediately to its south. On June 10th, I emailed to the City Council an Urban Land Institute survey of several urban land use planning studies. Multiple studies identified compact development as a solution to car dependency and greenhouse gas emissions. The ideal average density that they cited for compact development was 11 to 15 units per acre. The surrounding density within the overlay of this project dovetails perfectly with this at about 7 to 12 units per acre. And into all of this, applicant wanted to drop a structure that would accommodate 60 units per acre. The incongruity of what applicant seeks is a clear case of product mismatch. 60 units per acre is double what MARTA is currently seeking at their TOD, and applicant was going to try to do this in an area of the overlay where density is clearly supposed to be tapered down. As a result, it's our position that the applicant offends the plain language of the comprehensive plan, and for that reason, we'd ask that the City Council deny this application without deferral or without withdrawal. Thank you.
Jared Saft.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jared Saft. I live at 1404 Canucci Drive. I'm here to respond to two questions. The first one is, will the rezoning proposal permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of the adjacent and nearby properties? And in view of the smaller size, the shallower depth, and the adjacency to the residential community, the answer is no. The size, scale, and transitions are wholly incompatible with the properties flanking the site. You can see how the development started from Peachtree going east along Dresden tapers down, along with as you go north and south from Dresden. The proposed density is also five times greater than any pre-incorporation density which surrounds the project. Just want to point out that the city recognized that Brookhaven Village across the street and Village Park Place adjacent were conditioned to not exceed three stories, and their densities per acre is over three times as small as the applicant proposes. The effect of this lack of a step down is a development that will tower over the single-family homes adjacent to it. This is actually a scaled drawing of what my family and I expect to be seeing from my backyard adjacent to this monstrosity. It'll block my sun, kill my grass, and ruin my beautiful wife's perennials from blooming ever again. All the adjacent properties have adopted step-down solutions. As a member of the Planning Commission aptly stated, some projects just don't fit, and this proposed development clearly does not fit here. Every property adjacent to the proposed development buffer their Dresden-fronting properties from the single-family homes behind it with actual condos or townhomes. Lowering the height to 30 feet from my house is just in poor form. This isn't Peachtree Street or Beaufort Highway. This is just a tiny, two-lane road that has a suburban and village feel. Frankly, PC2 rezoning is absurd, and there's absolutely zero support from the community on this. If the city approves and doesn't withdraw the 60 units per acre proposal, it will be viewed as an approval of the prior DeKalb County decision to disregard of the comprehensive plan and the city zoning ordinance and carte blanche for allowing similarly high-density development along Dresden. Second question is, does the property have a reasonable use as currently zoned? I'd like to point to the council to page 12 of the staff recommendation, which said that the property is currently zoned appropriately. I do want to remind the council that reasonable economic use is not the same as highest or best use. What that means is that it's really not a valid argument to say that commercial PC2 makes more money than R75 or OI. There's no diminution in value concept. If we get a denial here, I hope that this slide will help comfort the council that we would have a firm, solid reasoning to defend a lawsuit here. If we get a denial, the burden is on the applicant to prove by clear and convincing evidence that both, one, that the existing zoning presents a significant detriment to the application, and, two, that the existing zoning is not substantially related to the public welfare. There's clear case law out there that says protecting single-family homes is of the utmost public interest. This second point is so crucial that the Supreme Court will actually defer to local government bodies' decisions, so that's why we're urging you to even vote to deny here and not withdraw. Do want to touch briefly that everybody in this room is not basically saying, no, we don't want any development here. We're perfectly happy with a lot of the properties that are adjacent, and we just put a list out here of something that we would be comfortable with having, but the applicant proposing a PC2 rezoning requires a denial here. Thank you.
Indy Bowman and then Jen Heath.
We're going to keep to the 348 folks.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm going to be talking about the number five, which is, are there other existing conditions that will affect the use and development of the property? I think we all know that we are about to be inundated with apartments, so the fact that we're going to have close to 7,000 in the area pretty quickly is a little concerning. We also want to note that the PC2 is the highest-density zoning option that is allowed without special land use permits, and it's being put into a sub-area, too. We would like to see a better mix of rental and homeownership, as right now, Brookhaven is heavy on apartment rentals versus DeKalb and Georgia as a whole. And size, if we let the PC2 go all the way through, what we'll see is something along the lines there where we have nothing but PC2 zoning. Size does matter. As you can see, there are other places on major roads like Roswell Road that have lower density. We would like to point that out, saying it is possible. And we all know that apartment renters are innately transient. We have a community here. It's represented tonight with our red shirts. I think we've made a point. And I think that's all that I have to say, other than we request a denial.
Karen, that was Jen. Okay. I'm Karen Durnovich. I live on Alden Place Drive, and thank you for giving us time. I'm going to skip ahead a bunch of slides so we can get to some things that were addressed tonight. We know that there's a lot of traffic, speed bumps, sewer, and water, and we've gone through some reasons. The things we want to talk about is denial without deferral, as nothing will change. We've worked for months, but they are talking about withdrawal today. We do believe that this will be redeveloped, but we believe it will be in a manner consistent with urban land use for compact development and surrounding developments identified by our community development. They've said they've spent a great deal of money. It is their business, and the costs are built into their models. We, as residents, have spent a ton of time and money, and we're not getting paid. They say they make compromises, but nothing that we've asked for from the beginning. We have said from the beginning that PC2 does not work for us in this location. And then, we've also heard that you'd better take us now, or someone else will come along with something worse. We understand that Brookhaven is the most sought-after prom date, and we have standards. The next thing I'll say is about withdrawal. We do not need to allow withdrawal for many reasons. Again, we've told them from the beginning that something like Village Park or Village Place are great options we can get behind, and to this, they've told us they're not interested because they can get PC2, and this plan is their product. A denial is completely appropriate for the plan that they submitted, and a process exists if they want to submit a substantially revised plan after denial. If we could do a withdrawal with condition detached, that might be something different, but that is not allowed under the law. Either way, we still have no guarantees that they won't come back trying to push something else other than what they claim now, so we should at least hold them to this process. Denial of these things is something that the City Council can do to show support for both its citizens and push these developers to come with their best plan from the first Again, we've repeatedly told you that we do not want this kind of density on Dresden. It's growing. We would ask that you would not accept withdrawal, not do deferral, but deny this application. And we look forward to a plan in the future that fits with the standards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, time's up, but I have a few that were wanting to speak. I'll call their names, and then I have 62 that opposed that did not want to speak. I will not call their names, but their name would be entered in the record.
Okay.
We had 13 more seconds. Do you want to let Tracy Elliott speak for the last 13 seconds?
I see none. Yeah, let's just go ahead and read the names and...
All right. Tracy Elliott opposed, Mickey Roberts opposed, Robert Forster opposed, Ronnie Mayer opposed, Trail Carstens opposed, Thomas Porter opposed, and then I have 62 that oppose.
Thank you. Is there any four?
I have one that's four.
Okay. Bring them up.
Or start them.
Yep. Hold on for just a second.
Okay, this is Gordon Robinson.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Gordon Robinson. I'm a native Atlanta, and I've lived in what's now Brookhaven for 26 years, first a single-family resident. Now, I live at 1418 Dresden Drive in Unit 307 at Village Place, Brookhaven. I bought that unit in October of 2009. This project, if it were approved, would be directly across from my unit. It will hurt me terribly to see the beautiful trees over there cut down that I so enjoy watching out of my windows, but it would hurt me more to have a development built there that is not feasible. Having been at Village Place, where we have approximately half the number of units that these people are seeking to build, I can tell you it is not financially feasible. We cannot take care of our property with the low number of owners that we have. We have had studies done for purposes of setting aside money to make maintenance and repairs as needed. We've also had bids come in of what we will need to replace our security systems, our access systems, our roofs. This year, we had a $200 special assessment among residences to replace battered and worn-out wall sconces. That was not received well. If we had to have a roof replaced, and it will have to be replaced within the next 15 years, we will not have the money to do so. It will cost us at least $1,200 to $1,500 per person to replace that. That is going to be a real hardship. I suspect that somewhere around 100, 120, high-density I acknowledge, but I think something like that would be more feasible as an operating standard. Let me also say that I am retired. I enjoy my condominium there, but I also have other places to go. I've had all the joys of home ownership I want in one life, and I would be a candidate to live in an apartment complex like this, that would rent for $2,500 a month, that I would have no burdens of maintenance, the homeownership of the unit, a building, that I would enjoy the amenities they have without additional cost, that I could lock it up and go, feeling secure in my home, and that I wouldn't have to worry if I had to replace the roof. Now, I'd be living in an apartment, and I would be transient. At some point, I would hope to die and go to a better place. But I don't think most people my age, which is the demographic they're looking for, are that transient. I think these are the places we go to when we don't want the burdens of homeownership anymore, and we still want to enjoy life in the neighborhoods where we've lived, maintain the friends we've had, and enjoy a pleasant lifestyle. My concern fundamentally is, I want to see the best possible project, and that means the highest quality value at the lowest density. But I think you're looking at a plot where if you don't have a substantial density, it may not be 120, I don't know what it's going to be, but you've got to have that threshold at which it becomes economically feasible to operate it within the budget of what it would take to keep it a first-class quality project. I was on board with this one because I've seen other soulless projects. I'm familiar with what Terwilliger Pappas has built in other places. Frankly, it's nicer than my home, and I would be delighted to live there. I leave it with you all. I understand the concerns of others who wish to have a lower density and who are concerned about blocking their view. Nobody's view is going to be more blocked than mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant, balance of time.
Thank you. As I said, I'm here representing the property owner, John Carlos, this evening, and I just want to say, just simply, it's not fair to punish the property owner because the applicant was not able to come to an agreement with the neighborhood. Anything that happens on this property that has a residential density will require rezoning. So by denying the application, you don't change the power of City Council. You still will have the power to decide what goes here in the future if this application is withdrawn. This is not a tactic. This is not a bait and switch. We're not withdrawing the application in order to come back and propose the same thing. Woody and I have combined almost 35 years of zoning experience, and I can tell you that if anyone walked into our law firm tomorrow and said, hey, we really want to do a four-story building here, what do you think? We're going to say, just forget about it, because it's not going to happen. We certainly wouldn't take the case. And the zoning attorneys in Metro Atlanta, we're actually a pretty small group, and we talk to each other. And if we know that somebody has had a zoning application that's not been successful on a property, we'll reach out to each other and share thoughts. And anyone who calls me, Carl Wismorland, Stephen Rothman, Julie Sellers, there's a lot of attorneys that you know, and I will tell them, the density that we propose is not going to happen, so don't even try. The neighborhood needs to feel comfortable that they're getting the type of density and type of quality project that they want there. We felt that we had met the requirements of both the overlay district and the land use plan. The overlay district designates this property for a three-to-six-story building, and it has incorporated in it the transitional height plane and buffers to the adjacent properties of the overlay, and we met those. If ever there is a time to have this property on the market, it's now. It's now while the message is fresh. If you deny this application, then nobody can reapply for two years. And that means that in two years, the next developer who comes along is going to say, well, it's been two years, the market is different, maybe they've changed their minds, I'm going to give it a shot. So the time to have this property on the market and allow it to be rezoned is now. There were a few things that were mentioned by the neighborhood about step down and reduction and some of the compromises, positions that we've made. I actually wrote out all the changes that we had made to the site plan because I knew I wouldn't be able to remember them all if I hadn't written them down, so I'm not going to go through them. I will say, we made significant changes, but I think part of our problem was that we were being told different things by different people. We had numerous meetings, large groups. We had several meetings with small groups, and while there was a strong contention of folks that said the PC2 is not appropriate, there were also people in the neighborhood who did not have an issue with PC2. What they had an issue with was... What they had an issue with was, you know, the no-for-sale product. So we added for-sale townhomes on the south side of the building. They had an issue with the height adjacent to the neighborhood. So we first stepped back the top story, and we're told that there was still some concern along the south side, so we then stepped back the top story even more, 18 feet, so that on the south side of the building, it was just a three-story building. We changed the traffic pattern so that it would be a, let me get this right, a left-in, right-in only on Apalachee, and pledged to build that in a way that people couldn't turn right and cut through the neighborhood. We offered to put in a traffic light at Apalachee and Dresden. We offered to, we had committed to put in turn lanes on Dresden Avenue. All of these things that we had offered to do, but unfortunately for the applicant, it wasn't enough, and we understand that. The court cases that the gentleman briefly mentioned were actually all decisions based on a denial of a rezoning request. And it's true that if you ask to rezon your property, then your burden is to go to court and say that the existing zoning is unconstitutional and therefore city council must rezon it. But we are not asking for a rezoning this evening. We are asking to withdraw this application. And there is no public purpose that's being served by denying the request for a withdrawal. It would do the owner's significant detriment because he would not be able to reapply for rezoning the property for two years and would not be able to put anything, sell the property to a developer. So we would ask that you support our request for a withdrawal and send the message to the market that this property is, may be developed, but what needs to go here is nothing that is compared to the current density. Thank you.
Okay, closing public hearing. Okay, we're now on the rezoning ordinance, ID 2397. I guess I'll open it up for questions from council to staff. Lindley?
Chris, so lawyer, I've got a question for you. The property owner's attorney said that if we deny, no one can reapply for rezoning for two years. Are there any exceptions to that?
Yes, there is an exception. The council has the discretion to shorten that period of time after a waiting period of six months under the zoning ordinance.
And if we were to allow a withdrawal tonight, how long would the property owner have to wait to reapply?
More.
Okay, so there's no waiting period whatsoever?
That's correct. It's only when there's a final action by the council that the waiting period is enforced or takes place.
But if we deny, they can reapply for reconsideration or consideration of shortening that time period to six months, after six months?
Yeah, after six months. You're correct. At the expiration of six months, they can come back to council and ask for permission to go back through the application process in less than the 24-month bar that would otherwise automatically apply.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Joe?
If they came back, would they have to come back with a project, or is it just an open request to be able to put it on the market again?
The ordinance is silent as to what the contents of that application would be. I would expect that the council in its discretion would require that the applicant show what it was that they had planned before undertaking to allow an exception to its already enacted limit on reapplying, but there's no requirement in the code for such a plan.
But still, in order for them to come back and just basically even put it back on the market, they'd have to ask for permission?
If what you're asking me, Councilmember Gebbia, is does the property owner have to reapply or apply to council for an exception to the 24-month bar, the answer to that question is yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, closing questions, discussion amongst yourselves. Anyone wants to speak on this matter?
You know, I will simply say that as a representative representing this property for District 3, there has been a tremendous amount of community involvement, and as we've all seen on the emails that we've gotten and calls and text messages, that there is very clear opposition from the public to this plan as proposed. An applicant is requesting withdrawal tonight, so we're really deciding between withdrawal or deferral based on their request. And the issue that we have is that as the mayor has announced, we have a proposed moratorium that is potentially coming down the pike. I think we've got that on the council agenda in August. Is that right? August. And with the, with no ability to apply for density or for a new application with density based on the moratorium for, I think it's proposed, six months, essentially you have the same result of time period of at least six months until a new application is submitted for the property. One of the things that I have tried to explain in talking to people about this case is that our charge is in representing our constituents and balancing that with applications coming from property owners on what the community wants to see built. It's what do you want to see as a future land use for the city of Brookhaven? And by far, I have heard the message from our residents that we're not closed to seeing a good development at this property. And for most people, I would say, out there in the red shirts, they are open to hearing a new proposal for this property with something that was more in line with the presentation that they've put up on there. It's a very, I appreciate all the citizens' time and effort that you all have gone through to show up here tonight, to send us those emails, and to put that spreadsheet together. So, you know, I'm going to make a motion for this property unless anybody has any other comments that they want to say. And the motion is to deny RZ 16-06 for the Tewilagapapas multifamily care of the Galloway Law Group, LLC. And does that motion need to change based on the fact that the applicant has withdrawn for this?
Second. Okay.
Just a...
Motion made and seconded. Let's discuss the motion.
Yeah, so the reason that I make this motion is that you have a situation where the two parties were simply unable, the applicant and the community, were unable to reach a compromise. But there is, as you can see from the presentation, that the community is certainly open to continuing that dialogue. And what we have here is a time period in which that, hopefully, these two parties can continue to have a discussion. And I think that the city at large really needs to have a discussion about what we want to see developed on Dresden Drive, because I don't want to see you people have to come and continue to come to these community meetings and have the same discussions over and over again about density when our codes would allow for, you know, these applications that say you can build up to 60 units per acre. As a community, we've got to be clear to our developers about what we want to see. And I hope that we have a perfect opportunity right now with this character study analysis. And yet, we're not talking about the overlay in this character study. I encourage us to add the overlay to the character study, to have a discussion so that we can be clear and use this six-month time period to really define what are we willing to see built on Dresden Drive, both this parcel and on other future developments along Dresden Drive and Peachtree, because it is, this is what I consider a worst-case scenario, is that we have a denial, a motion, and yet we have no feasible, we have no reality of what we're actually saying is something that we would like to see, other than in the proposal that you all have made, which I appreciate. That's a great first step towards being very clear to the development community about what they can build, because these folks and these applicants have spent a lot of time, and I recognize the community has spent a lot of time on this, and it has produced a zero-sum game where it is a lose-lose, and we will have most likely another conversation and rezoning application on this property at some future date. So, that's it, my piece.
And one wants to speak. John?
You know, ever since my election, I've, you know, initially I was lone voice in this. And what I've been telling developers is bring your A-game early, get community support early, because if you don't, we will not hesitate to follow our laws, and those laws are in place for a reason. The reason why the denial option is in the law books is because, is in order to protect the citizens so that every six months, they don't have to come back and sacrifice hundreds of hours of their times. These aren't people that are retired with plenty of time on their hands doing this for fun. These are people with jobs, with children, who are working hard to protect their neighborhoods. And for us to ignore that and not send a clear message and not deny when it's warranted, I think is irresponsible on our part as a council. As far as the damage done to the owner because the applicant is withdrawn, as far as I'm concerned, the owner of the property is the applicant. He has hired an agent. That agent represents the owner. He did not act without his permission. So that, to me, that argument is dubious. And it's like at a zoning ZBA hearing, creating your own hardship and asking for a, you know, asking for, to rectify that. So I have been pushing this since the beginning in my mind. Obviously, I have been keeping silent because I like to keep an open mind until the hearing, but I have been listening, and this is a time to act. So that is why I support this denial.
Lindley?
Well, the Community Development Department recommended denial. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended denial, and the neighbors want denial, so all of that's good enough for me. And I'll just add that I personally don't see the benefit of all these new apartments at this location myself.
Joe?
We don't enjoy doing this at council. This is not fun. There's always a loser when we have to contend with these situations. So that's why I was in favor of really supporting the character area, because that moves us one step further to helping to really define what do residents want as far as how their neighborhoods are coming along. But Bates is right. We have a situation here where a developer has come and basically has taken the rules that's in place and attempted to move forward without reaching consensus with you all. So we do need to address this. This is the, this is the 800-pound gorilla in the room, as far as I can see it. And until we address it, we're never really going to get to a resolution on these. So we're talking about how we can incorporate it, and if we can't do it now, we definitely encourage council through our city manager to make sure that we address this immediately as possible when the time is right, because we have to address how we're going to handle this situation.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Denied. Okay, go on to the next agenda item. We'll give you guys some time. I guess I'll stay here. Is anyone from the Brookhaven Bucks here? Oh, hey. Well, we have a... Come on, come on up.
Well, I'll read a quick proclamation for you.
On a happier note.
On a happier note. Whereas the Brookhaven Bucks, Brookhaven's home team are members of the Sunbelt Baseball League. The Sunbelt is a nonprofit. It's the premier wooden college bat league in the southeast. There are eight teams, and this league is funded by the major league. And some of the best college players from around the country come to play for the Bucks and other Southern Baseball League, Sunbelt Baseball League teams. The Sunbelt Bucks ran their season from the beginning of June till early August. I think you just had your last...
Last night.
Last night was your last game. Try to get here early. And the games are played in Olga Thorpe, which is the heart of Brookhaven. And there's been six seasons, and nine have been drafted, nine players have been drafted to the major leagues, and we had players from Brookhaven that have returned home. And again, Brad Dickerson here is the general manager and owner of the Brookhaven Bucks. I highly suggest everyone out there, now that you've stayed, to next season, next summer, come out, watch college baseball at its finest out there. But I do, I thereby recognize it was a great appreciation to Brookhaven Bucks for what you mean to the community and the service you provide.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make sure to wear a red shirt. That's fine, probably. We'll do a quick picture.
The Bucks?
Yep.
Where's that?
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Congratulations. Congrats. I wish I could come out and talk a little bit of love. Come out and be one of the people that gets excited.
Okay. Is there any other agenda announcements? Are any other, anyone else have any agenda announcements? Okay?
I would like to say one thing, Mayor, real quick, before everyone leaves. It's just really nice to see all the Hawks fans out there. The Hawks.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, is this agenda announcement?
Oh, Mayor's announcements.
Oh. You know, just there's a, I had sent an email out to our city manager about the West Nile virus, and Zika, the city didn't send out a blast last Friday, but there are recommendations. Is that, are those on our website, the recommendations from the CDC and the Camp County Waterhouse about the...
I don't know if they're, probably not a direct link to it, but the, each of the blasts are on the website.
Are on the website.
So it won't be difficult for us in the morning or even tonight to make it more prominent, if you believe it's necessary.
No, it's, it's fine. I just want to point people to the city of Brookhaven website. You can go under the news blasts and see what the recommendations are about the West, so a mosquito was trapped in Ashford Park that tested positive for West Nile virus. It just has recommendations about how to be safe with mosquito control.
Go ahead.
Thank you. If I could just add, since we have a vast audience here today and the great folks out in the etherware, we do have programs for treating our stormwater facilities. Obviously, mosquito control is a county function, but there are things we do here locally to assist in that effort, and it's simply, simply it's around our stormwater function.
Thank you. Okay, Lindley?
All right. On a fun note, I want to make sure that everybody remembers that this Saturday night, we have the exclusive showing of the most recent Star Wars movie in Blackburn Park at 9:00. But at 7:00, we have a Nerf battle for kids ages 12 and under. What's that?
Gentle.
A gentle Nerf battle. Friendly Nerf battle. We're following the west coast rules. There's more than one set of rules. The west coast rules are now posted on the city's website. If the young people in your life are as excited as my son is about this event, they can see what equipment is allowed. Goggles are required for all children, and we really want to get the kids out and playing and participating in this big, fun, gentle Nerf battle. So I hope I'll see you all there Saturday night.
Okay, Joe? Lindley, was it you who asked if we were having an adult Nerf war?
I have been asked repeatedly to have one that's not limited to ages 12 and under, to have an all-ages Nerf battle in the future, so we'll have to look into that.
That's part of my Hunger Games project.
Well, there's, I could say a zoning joke right there, but... Okay, any other announcements, John?
Nope.
Agenda announcements? Any agenda announcements? Seeing none, moving on. Public comment? Do we have a public comment?
Ronnie Mayer.
Good morning, afternoon, Ronnie Mayer, 2709 Reading Road. I see the political move of doing a moratorium, that's just a political move. Everything else is already in the pipeline. You've got the martyr bit, the thing besides mom and pop, you can't stop that. That should have been done a year or two ago, and the councilmen that were here then should have jumped on the bandwagon then instead of just being lame. But it is what it is. And I wish that y'all would have extended the time where we could speak while everybody was here. A lot of people have left. So, I mean, I'm going to hold up pictures here that I took to take pictures. My wife is a real estate agent, and these townhouses in Brookhaven on Peachtree sell for a million, too. We could build these on Dresden with a few restaurants on top or underneath, and then a few little flats on top, and it'll work. Mr. Carlos can fund it, can sell. I mean, and it's, you know, the excuse I've heard, if they can't get funding, Mr. Carlos can fund it himself. We'd like to have movies in the park at some other place besides Blackburn Park all the time. Before this was a city, we had the movies at Ashford Park. Are we a stepchild? All these other parks, that kids, I just want to know why we haven't had any movies at Ashford Park. Everything's at Blackburn Park. There's other parks around here, and a lot of people live on this side are a little upset about it. Now, the main permit I'm going to come tonight, this is a picture of our fire engine. It's nothing to do with our city, nothing to do with the fire department. You have to email your DeKalb County Commissioners, we have new fire trucks at our fire station. We are losing five to seven-year veterans, two or three a month. Our driver for this truck, Sunday morning, got sent to Mollin Avenue because they didn't have a driver down there. So the chief went through his list when he heard that I was fixing to make folks off the Channel 2. They brought in a firefighter, all duty on his birthday, and he came in at 11:00 that morning, and they removed this, and he worked all day on his birthday. My wife and I went Sunday night with a birthday cake, and I streamed all the firefighters and thanked him for coming here. But in my eyes, we need to add $100 to every house on fire tax. And I know it's $100 a lot to some people, but to have the firemen, when you have a house fire, all your neighbors are going to say, God, Johnny's in there, the house on fire. The police officer is going to block the road off, but they don't have the equipment to go in and rescue. And firefighters are going to pull from the fire truck, throw a match, and stuff them, and walk in the fire to rescue you. So we have to spend that extra $100 on each house to fund this. This is nothing to do with our fire team, nothing to do with our council, but please don't be afraid and email the DeKalb County Commissioners and tell them to quit screwing around with our fire department.
Thank you very much, Ronnie.
Thank you.
Okay, no more public comment then? Consent agenda? I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda?
The motion is our second?
Seconded.
Motion and second, all those in favor approve the consent, say aye.
Aye.
It's been, it's consented to. Any other announcements? Guys have any other announcements? Any other public comment? Seeing none, no public comment. I thank mayor's comment, I thank everyone for coming out today. I think your voices were heard through emails and discussions with council, and you're showing up here today. Still, stay active and involved. Please come to your character area studies that have just been announced, and so we can do give proper direction to us and council and to the developer world. With that, I'll take a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Dang it! All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.